Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boston Spa Central School District Board of Education for May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Can we all rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting. For those in attendance, the emergency exits are behind me in each corner, leading outside, and the main entrance that leads to the hallway at the front of the library. Like to welcome those who are watching on our live stream. I'd just like to start out by first just highlighting all the wonderful events that have been taking place in our district. So we've had events during the week. We've had events on the weekends. We had our Health and Wellness Fair last weekend with our Scotty Stampede and color run events. And we have sporting events going on. We have musical concerts happening at our elementary schools and high school and middle school, and starting to gear up for end-of-year activities, including exams and fun events like dances and moving up days. So it's just an incredibly busy time of the year, and hopefully everyone is enjoying it fully. I'd like to certainly say thanks to our community for their support of our school district with the passing of the school budget yesterday. And thank you for the support for our board members. We had two members who were re-elected. Congratulations, congratulations. And we had an appointed member who was first-time elected into now a three-year term. And welcome and congratulations to Julia. I just want to mention some fine print on all this. So Dr. Routbert Baskin was appointed to a vacancy. The appointment expired at midnight yesterday on the election day. So she will be joining us here at the tables as a guest of the board until we have a walk-on resolution to accept the results of the election. Once we accept the results of the election, then an oath of position will be administered, and then you'll be able to vote on resolutions. So until that happens, again, please, we're honored to have you join us as a guest, but you will not be able to vote on resolutions until after the oath has been administered. That's a lot of fine print, I'm sorry. And other than that, now recognition?
I also want to thank the community for supporting the budget. And I also want to thank Mr. Brian Siriani for the work he does with the budget the whole season. So thank you to everyone. I also want to congratulate the cast, crew, and pit of Troop. The cast, crew, and pit of Mean Girls was nominated for six awards, and on Saturday they won for Best Musical in Tier C for Mean Girls. And we also had Roman Mangino win Best Supporting Actor. So tremendous accomplishment. They're going to be invited to our next board meeting for student recognition on June seventh. But congratulations to them, and that is what I have for recognition.
Okay. We are now at time for our first public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Thank you. So as I always do, I will read our guidance on public participation at meetings. The Board of Education welcomes district residents, parents, and other interested persons to its meeting. Community involvement at board meetings is encouraged so that the board can better understand and represent the views of its constituents. Please be aware, however, that information such as individual student information or particular personnel issues cannot be discussed at public sessions of the board. Speakers will be called upon individually. When recognized by the board president, will be asked to approach the podium and state your name and residence. Statements are restricted to a maximum of two minutes, and speakers will be notified when the board president, when his or her time has expired. And as I always do, somewhere around the two-and-a-half-minute mark or so, I will ask you to please conclude your remarks. The board and district staff take our public comment very seriously, however, the board will not respond to comments or questions during the public comment period. The board asks the public's cooperation in maintaining a safe and respectful environment, and the board president reserves the right to limit individual comments if it is deemed necessary. To achieve this, speakers will not make slanderous attacks on any group, organization, or individual, a member of the board, an employee of the district, a member of the audience, or a member of the public. Speakers will not use profane, vulgar, threatening, or disparaging language, or racial or ethnic slurs, and speakers will please not disrupt the meeting with loud outbursts or other disruptive conduct or behavior, either during the speaker's assigned time or any other time during the meeting. And I ask again for our speakers to please address the board as a whole. Speakers understand that a failure to comply with these rules for maintaining a respectful and productive environment may result in early termination of the speaker's allotted time, a denial of future requests to speak, and any other actions deemed necessary by the president of the board, or where appropriate in the matter of a health and safety measure, the superintendent of schools. And so give the privilege of the floor to Steve Galish.
Good evening. My name is Steve Galish. I live in the town of Milton. The word hero conjures up images of our mind of self-sacrifice and moral dedication with no expectation of reward. With Memorial Day celebration upon us, remember that some of our heroes paid the ultimate sacrifice. On April nineteenth, seventeen seventy-five, a group of farmers stood up against the most powerful army in the world, Lexington Green in Massachusetts. They stood there not expecting to earn the title of hero, but rather they had a moral obligation and commitment to each other and to themselves because it was the right thing to do. They'd been pushed to the moral limit, and that was the only thing they could do. On April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, two hundred and forty-eight years to the very day, I along with others witnessed another heroic act right here in this room. One individual on the board had the courage and moral conviction to say no. While the rest of his colleagues on the board consented to allow immoral books to be added to the school library, he said no. Since August of two thousand and twenty-one, when I first began attending the school board meetings in Boston, someone finally said no. This individual most likely earned the disdain of his fellow colleagues in administration and perhaps even a few parents, but for me, he is in fact the embodiment of a hero. For the rest of you, well, what's the opposite of being a hero? You either have no moral convictions or conscience, or your moral compass is stuck to the hard left. You may claim that allowing biological males and biolog- into allow access into biological female locker rooms is just following the law, but there's no law that requires objectionable books to be purchased using taxpayer monies and maintained in our school library. You've graduated from supporting to actively aggressively promoting this promiscuous and alternate lifestyle, but it won't end here. In the very near future, there will be efforts to lower the age of consent, and it's already happening in New York State. Pedophilia will become openly discussed and then practiced. Innocent children will be victims, and it all started because you said yes. As I stated, on April third, two thousand and twenty-three, I firmly believe that God will reward the heroes. I would strongly encourage you, no, I would beg you, to listen to what God said in the second chapter of Romans. God will repay each person according to what they have done. To those by the persistence of doing good, seeking glory, honor, and immortality, he will grant eternal life. But to those who are self-seeking and who reject the truth and follow evil, there will be wrath and anger. There will be trouble and distress for every human who does evil. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes our first public comment period. Next up, our student government report.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the students at the high school, we would like to welcome Mr. Robinson to the high school and congratulate him on his appointment as our new principal. The students are excited to see the positive impact that you will have on our building, and we look forward to embracing you into our Scotty community. We know that you will find it a place comprised of excellent teachers, hard-working, and dedicated students, and a supportive community at large. This is truly a special place. On a lighter note, we hope you know your football because you're now one of the new senior powder puff coaches. Dr. Duka will get you the playbook. You have an undefeated record to maintain. This is just one of the many things to look forward to as the newest member of the Dog Pound. On May twenty-fourth, the junior class will be hosting a spikeball tournament on the football fields at four o'clock. Congrats to Troop, who was awarded Best Musical at the Proctors Awards, and congrats to Roman Mangino on being named Best Supporting Actor.
Our sports teams have entered sectionals. The baseball team played today and won nine to eight, and the softball team plays tomorrow. Student government has held elections for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. We will be having a meeting next week with our new teams.
And lastly, congratulations to Mrs. Whittemore, Mr. Dreer, and Ms. Routbert Baskin on your reelection to the board. We are grateful for your advocacy for our students. Thank you.
Any questions for our student government representatives? Thank you very much for your information, and as always, you may excuse yourselves from the rest of the meeting. Yeah, studying to do, right? Next up on our agenda is our approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May third, two thousand and twenty-three public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any amendments or additions? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes for the May third, two thousand and twenty-three public hearing are approved. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May third, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any amendments or additions? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approve- the minutes of the May third, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting are approved. Next on our agenda is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Tonight, I am thrilled to welcome Colleen Russo from the Boston Area Community Center to give us a presentation on programming. Welcome.
Welcome. We're thrilled to have you.
Glad to be here. Good evening, everyone. So I am here tonight to talk a little bit about BACC. So for those of you that are familiar at all with the Boston Area Community Center, we were founded in nineteen eighty-one, and we serve children and families throughout the Boston Spa Central School District, but also the Boston area in general. We are run by a board of directors and well, qualified staff oversee our program design, development, and our implementation, all of our lovely day-to-day programs. So our mission at the Boston Area Community Center is to provide essential community services, programs, supports, and projects that enhance the social, emotional, and recreational development of youth and families in the Boston area. So we really try to stick to that mission every day at the center. When we're dealing with things, we try to take it to heart. So who am I? Well, I am the executive director at the Boston Area Community Center. I was appointed in two thousand two, oh, two thousand and twenty-two. I have a background in project management, staff development, training, social work, really active in the community. I am a resident of the Boston Spa Central School District and also a parent in the district, so I'm very close to home. And I also have my assistant director here with me tonight, just kind of getting her out and introducing her to the community as well, because hopefully you'll be seeing a lot more of her. So this is just a little bit of a recap. In two thousand and twenty-two, we served over nineteen hundred people in the community. Sometimes people are a little bit surprised by that number because they aren't fully aware of all the programs that we really offer. But you can see in two thousand and twenty-two, even coming back out of the pandemic, we really did have a pretty strong year. I mean, just to note, all of the children in our school-age childcare program and UPK programs are exclusive, just children in the Boston Spa School District. So- Yes, the VIDA program?
Yeah, what is that?
Yeah, let me go back. Nope, that's okay. So the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program is a program that we run during tax season every year, and anyone typically under sixty thousand dollars is eligible for free tax preparation. Mostly, I want to say, retirement, lower-income families and things like that, but we do actually have a lot of single people and things like that that utilize our services. Yes. So our current programs. So just to review a little bit of what we currently offer, this year, we were lucky enough to be able to expand our UPK program. So we have been offering two full-day classes since November. It's gone extremely well, I would say, and we appreciate the partnership from the district being able to get that up and running. But it is specifically for children that are eligible for kindergarten the following year. So they have to be four, they have to reside in the district, and it is a research-based curriculum. It promotes overall growth in child development. We've added STEM curriculum this year, so that's really exciting. We're looking to really full-on dive into that next year, but we'll get into that in a little bit. We also have our school-age childcare program. That's probably what we're most well-known for, I want to say, in the district. So that's before and after care. Right now, we have a total of a hundred and fifty seats in the morning and in the afternoon. We have two sites, our main site in Malta Ave, and then we're also located in the Gordon Creek Elementary School currently. Other current programs, the VIDA program, so just what I was talking about. Again, it runs January through April, and I believe this year we served about a hundred and seventy people. So we're still looking at the numbers. And then our teen and community programs. So we offer weekly programs, Open Gym. We offer teen programs, special one-off events. A lot of times, we'll try to coordinate First Fridays with the Village, drop-off programs. We try to offer as many free programs as possible, just because we try to get grant funding for a lot of them to be able to offer them at no cost to the community. Other current programs, we are just getting into this now. So our summer day camp, and that is eight weeks. They are all one-week sessions, children five to ten, and we go up to about a hundred children a week at our main site. It includes swimming lessons, weekly field trips, bounce houses, you know, magicians, all sorts of fun stuff. Really, we try to make it as fun as possible for these kids. The kids in these programs are largely Boston Spa School District, but we do open to other families as well. Travel program, this one is a very hot commodity. I don't know if anyone has heard about it, but the kids actually talk about it in school and try to plan what weeks they'll be there together. It's really cute. So same thing, eight one-week sessions. We've actually increased our capacity. We can go up to seventy-five, but we'll kind of be lingering around that seventy this year just to kind of see how it goes. And then they go all over. They go to state parks, they're going to the Bronx Zoo this year, Zoom Flume, they go to Six Flags, a lot of great opportunities for kids that don't get out of the area. And again, all of this is included in their weekly registration fee, so it's really awesome. And we actually do have some kids that are able to attend on scholarship, so these are really kids that don't get any opportunity to get out of the area that really get that opportunity. So one of the biggest reasons I'm here is to talk about how we are growing, and part of that growth is starting already. So our school-age childcare program, we have been working with the district to try to get more space. We always have a waitlist. We don't advertise, zero marketing, and they're out the door. So we really, really want to meet that need. Everything is back and open, parents need care, they're being called back into the office. We want to meet that need as much as possible. So we want to try to open an additional site at Wood Road. We've been in talks with the district about that. And we also applied in the fall of last year to get additional seats at Gordon Creek. So we were awarded fifteen additional seats, so we will be upping our capacity to seventy-five. And this kind of ties into our travel program. We also run out of Gordon Creek, so with that increased capacity, we're allowed to take more kids into our travel program, which opens up more capacity at our main center. So a lot of things kind of play off of each other in this, in this world. UPK, we will also be expanding. We just kind of released the information and started taking waitlist kids for our fourth full-day class. So we are going to have sixty-six four-year-olds in our building next year, full day. We are so excited, and we are thrilled that the district has been so wonderful in partnering with us. So this is going to include, we have STEM, we have Chromebooks that we got through a grant, so the kids are really immersed in that pre-kindergarten. We bring in yoga every week, music and movement class. We want them to feel like they're preparing to go to school. So we've gotten a lot of great feedback from the community this year, and we haven't formally released anything yet to our parents, so I can't really say anything too much, but we will also be looking at providing care for these kids. We did get a waiver from OCFS to provide care to our four-year-old, so we're looking at how to meet that need so that the kids in our UPK can also possibly access before or after-care services right at the building, which also is going to be a huge asset to working parents because the program only runs from nine to two. So I don't know how many people on their day at two, but we sure don't. Our teen program, we are very excited. So during COVID, teen programs shut down. So the space wasn't really used for that. We're doing remote learning. We're revamping it. We're painting it, we're putting some money into it, we're upgrading some of the electronics. We're going to try to bring the kids in first and then try to engage them in other ways. We really have found that getting them in the door into the building to see what we offer is the biggest piece. Once we do, they come back. So we need inviting space, so we are investing some time into that over the summer to really have a big relaunch in the fall. And along with that, we are going to be offering some more really, I call it tween and teen-based programming for that twelve to thirteen to probably sixteen, seventeen age range. So we'll be kind of looking to partner more with the middle and high school on some of those things to really try to meet what the needs are. And then something that we've really been talking about, and this is something that, again, the district would really have to be a partner on, is those grades seven through nine, they're not really old, they can go home, should they be home alone? What are they doing? Where are they going? When they leave here, what's going on? And so even having some sort of drop-in program at the middle school, at the high school, a classroom, some sort of space where maybe we can kind of get the kids there after school, provide a safe space, and then still try to get them involved in the community through BACC. So that's kind of the vision that we would like to kind of work on next. So I have Megan here with me tonight. I would say she's my right-hand lady, but I'm left-handed, so my left hand. She literally knows everything there is to know about BACC. She's been here for over five years. As the assistant director, she's going to be running the teen program. She will oversee the school-age childcare program, and she is phenomenal. If you talk to any of my parents, they will rave about her. She is amazing. And then Jessica Bradley is the childcare director, and Sarah McKinley recently was promoted. She is going to be our universal pre-K director. She is also a phenomenal teacher in our UPK program. So just a couple things we have coming up. Our current family registration, we're going to be opening on the twenty-fourth. New families, June fifth, and then our last day of before-and-after program is the twenty-third. Will be closed the twenty-sixth through the fourth, and then we reopen for eight weeks of really fun summer. Looking forward to it. So contact information, if you ever need anything, we're fairly easy to find. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. That my son was fortunate enough to do UPK and at BACC, and it was life-changing for him, especially, you know, somebody who hadn't ever gone to a childcare center. We were very fortunate enough, so that was really helped him to transition into the school environment. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you. And he also loved the summer travel programs, and we fought every year to try and get him into a spot with his friends. So just BACC is such a treasure and asset to our community, so I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. No, not for the parents. There's no cost. They have to be eligible for kindergarten the following year and reside in Boston Spa School District.
I don't believe income-wise, though.
No, nope. That's the only eligibility requirement we have.
And we're pushing for that before and after-school care as well for them, so it'll make it even better for working parents so that they have that extended timeframe. And if you haven't been to the ACC before, come in and visit. We are hidden in the community. Before I worked there, I had no idea either, so it's excited, we're excited to get out there more. And if you ever have needs, we are an open building, we have a big gymnasium, and we're here for the community, so.
I just want to say thank you very much for coming and presenting. You do a much better job than I could have to kind of relay the information to the board. And I just want to thank the BACC board for welcoming me in to sit in on some of their meetings and happy to have this great partnership. Thank you.
Yeah, we really appreciate the partnership from the district. We couldn't do what we do without that support, so we look to continue and grow that partnership if possible.
Any other questions and comments? So I just want to add that, you know, the community center has been a vital part of the, the community for decades and decades and decades. You know, anecdotally, I know about parents who do drop-in basketball and athletic activities. I've seen various social activities take place there, and I know my, my own son way back, like two thousand and two, two thousand and three, used to go to a teen movie club there, and it was really very much enriching for him and the other teens that participated. And so, you know, wonderful things have been happening there for decades, and thank you very much for all you do, and thank you for attending and sharing the information.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you.
Any other?
That concludes the report.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. I believe we had a policy committee meeting.
Yes, the policy committee met today at six P.M., and the first thing that we discussed was our meetings for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and we're going to meet quarterly October eighteenth, January seventeenth, April tenth, which is a special Wednesday due to spring break, and May fifteenth. We also talked about recommendations for Policy eighty-three twenty and eighty-three thirty about adding language for book materials to be more specific to, adding language to be more specific about library materials as well. And we talked about Policy seventy-three ten, which is the code of conduct, and the middle school and high school administration will be tasked with looking at the dress code section of the code of conduct over the summer, and will be reporting back to the policy committee at the October eighteenth meeting. And that's it.
Questions on the policy committee meeting or any policy actions? Okay, and I'll just take this moment to clarify the resolutions coming up today. That's our second reading and approval vote, right?
Correct.
Okay, and as each of them come up, I will just ask that we just give a brief highlight on what the change is, which we can, we can work on together.
Okay.
Okay, no other questions? Okay, no other questions for policy? And we don't have any other committee reports? So correspondence to the district?
Sure. We had four phone calls, three regarding student matters, one regarding special education, and we had three emails, one on the stop-arm camera, one regarding alumni relations, and one regarding the threat in an upcoming ceremony.
Okay. And correspondence to the board. Since the last meeting, the board received one email, and it was an email regarding proposed legislation for changes to the federal Title IX. And we're at our time and our agenda for announcements. Mr. Williams?
So you heard there's obviously a lot going on, and a lot of the information is on our website. We're trying to keep up with all the different activities and events, but there are things that get developed as we go through the year. And some are community events that we're involved with as well, so I'm just going to point out a few things. We do have our marching band is going to participate in two parades, one this weekend and one next weekend. So this weekend is the Armed Forces Day Parade in Malta, ten AM on Saturday morning. And next week is the Boston Spa Village has a Memorial Day Parade at nine AM up and down Milton Avenue. So again, we'll have our high school students involved in that. We have a lot of different ceremonies going on with our induction ceremonies. Starting this Saturday, we have our Athletics Hall of Fame induction ceremony. It's a community-based organization that works with the district, and they recognize some of our athletes, obviously after they're out of high school, and they're inducting the class from 2020. That ceremony was canceled that year, and everything shut down, but they're bringing it back. So again, that'll be at one o'clock on Saturday here in the high school auditorium and in the cafeteria. They put out the time on it from one to five o'clock, but it's really not that long. It's a quick ceremony in the auditorium, then they move out in the cafeteria, and they have a reception out there. And a lot of the people are coming back from distances, and they like to hang out and chat. So if you want to come by Saturday afternoon, you can check out the Hall of Fame induction ceremony. Our Honor Society also have their induction ceremonies. So on the twenty-third is the high school level, National Honor Society does theirs at six o'clock here in the auditorium. And then on the thirty-first, our middle school group, the National Junior Honor Society, does their induction ceremony at seven o'clock, again, here in the auditorium.
I'm sorry, Stuart, what date was that?
The thirty-first is the Junior Honor Society. Our Clean Tech Early College High School is doing their next project exposition for the ninth and tenth graders, and that's at nine AM next week on the twenty-fourth. So if you have time to get out there on the morning of the twenty-fourth, you can see them at nine AM. Again, we've heard it before, there's always a lot of interesting projects that they come up with, and the kids are just great to talk to. So if you can make it out there, that's on the twenty-fourth. And then as we get to June, on June first, the board members should have gotten some type of invitation to the athletic recognition ceremony. It'll be held here in the library. It's an after-school event at three o'clock where they recognize the Division One, Division Two athletes. So again, if you're able to make that on June first, that'll be here in the library. On the second, our Malta Avenue School does a school-wide event. It's a Friday evening, four-thirty to seven o'clock to Malta and beyond. It's a multicultural, multifaceted event with dancing, with food, with artwork throughout the school. So again, if you're able to make it there on Friday, June second, that's four-thirty to seven at Malta Avenue. And then, of course, the prom you've heard of is happening on June third. It's a big weekend for our high school students. And the Tri-M Honor Society is our musical honor society. You've seen them involved in some of the concerts and some of the activities that are going on. They actually induct the new members into Tri-M on June sixth. So again, that's another ceremony here in the high school at seven o'clock. And your next meeting is on June seventh. That's it, unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much for the announcements. Do you have any old business?
Old business from the district?
All right, moving on to new business. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number five-five-one, Board of Education Policy Manual File seven-five-nine-zero, Wellness Policy on Physical Activity and Nutrition?
Some will second.
Any discussion? So if my memory serves me correct, this had updated language that kind of updated nutrition standards for in-school activities?
Yes, there'll be a list of approved foods that parents can send in now with their child for the school party, or whatever, if the teacher requests something.
And the policy has sort of been amended during the COVID days to adjust for that, and now this is sort of a...
We're readjusting back.
Revisit and readjust back. Perfect. So any questions? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number five-five-one passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number five-five-two, Board of Education Policy Manual File eight-two-eight-zero, English Language Learners Proficiency Instruction?
Some will second.
Any discussion?
This is just updating terminology and language to go along with...
It was actually with changes in state regulation, I think.
Right, yes.
We were updating the policy to be in line with that. Okay. Any other further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number five-five-two passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number five-five-three, Appointment of Chairperson, Chief Inspectors, and Election Inspectors?
Some will second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number five-five-three passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number five-five-four, Smart Schools Bond Act?
Some will second.
Any discussion? So first, I'd ask Mr. Siriani to just give us a brief overview of what this is, please.
Just a reminder to the board that this is a state program. There's no cost to the district. In fact, what the district did is essentially a grant from the state to improve its technology, infrastructure, and devices and equipment for students. So it's a plus-plus.
Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number five-five-four passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number five-five-five, Agreement to Professional Services?
Some will second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number five-five-five passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number five-five-six, Acceptance of Donation?
Some will second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number five-five-six passes, and my thanks to those that made the donation. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number five-five-seven, Award of Bid?
Some will second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number five-five-seven passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number five-five-eight, Placement of Students with Disabilities?
Some will second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number five-five-eight passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number five-five-nine, Placement of Preschool Students with Disabilities?
Some will second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number five-five-nine passes. Resolutions Number five-sixty through five-seventy-three are recognized as a consent agenda for the purpose of Board of Education action. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, Resolutions Number five-sixty through five-seventy-three.
Some will second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolutions Number five-sixty through five-seventy-three, the consent agenda passes. We do have a walk-on resolution tonight. I will read it. Resolution Number five-seven-four, Canvas, Results of May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three Budget Vote and Board Election. Whereas Education Law Section two-zero-three-four requires the Board of Education to tabulate and declare the results of the budget vote and board election, and whereas the final results, including the tabulation of the affidavit ballots, are available, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby declares and accepts the tabulation of the budget vote and the board election results, and be it further resolved that the following individuals have won election to the Board of Education for a term of three years, Matthew Dreher, Katie Whitmore, and Julia Routh-Fort Baskin, be it further resolved that the all propositions one through three presented to the public were passed on May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. So, first of all, may I have a resolution to walk on Resolution Number five-seventy-four?
Some will second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We motion to walk on Resolution Number five-seventy-four passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number five-seventy-four, Canvas, Results of May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three Budget Vote and Board Election?
Some will.
Any discussion?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Oh, second. Okay. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number five-seventy-four passes. I do not believe... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to back up just one step. And in our consent agenda, I want to recognize that we had the appointment of our new high school principal, Mr. Matthew Robinson, and he is in attendance, and welcome to the district, and welcome to what will soon become a very familiar building for you.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yes. Okay. Any other new business then? So with the approval of Resolution Number five-seventy-four, the results of the May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three Budget Vote and Board Election, we are going to administer the oath of office for Dr. Routh-Fort Baskin.
So I, Dr. Routh-Baskin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the State of the Union and the United States, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a coordinated education member according to the statute I built.
Thank you, Brian. Brian's always very good about getting the signatures. And we are all set, and congratulations and welcome for a three-year term. Okay, we are now at the time in our agenda for our second public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Thank you. The same guidance that I read earlier for the first public comment session is still in effect, and so will Mr. Jason Gertler. Please approach the podium. You have the privilege of the floor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jason Gertler, Rollin Street, Boston Spa. Congrats to Mr. Dreher, Mrs. Whitmore, Mrs. Baskin. So I'm here tonight because I bring a concern. It was brought to my attention about the response to the threat that was made on the district on April fourth, twenty-twenty-three. The threat was made via social media, and many students were aware prior to the seven-ten AM call that the sheriffs received. It's also believed that the administration knew about this threat prior to seven-ten AM, before buses started arriving, as teachers and staff were arriving. So the decision was made that they were going to allow students to enter the school and try to apprehend the known threatener. By doing so, you put hundreds of people's lives in danger. We don't know that the threat was credible. Can't prove it. It may very well have been. You could have just made the decision to allow an active shooter into the district, into the school. Then the situation would have been much worse. We know so because teachers and staff were vacating the building. They had the ability to do so. They're free to do so as they are adults. They were aware of the situation. They made decisions to vacate the premises. The students, on the other hand, were forced into a dangerous situation with no decision to make on their own. Why was this decision made to put so many students' lives in danger when even faculty and staff were scared to enter the building? I would just like to get an answer on that, please. Some clarification, I think you owe it to the community. Thank you. And welcome to Mr. Robinson.
Thank you for your comment. Now is the time for our associations and other groups to share information if they have it. Do we have anyone here from our associations? Don't think so. Any PTA or PTSA updates? Okay. We're thrilled the PTSA is going to be doing the after-prom event. In the lobby of our high school, you can see all the things that our businesses and community members have donated as prizes, raffle prizes, to be given away during the course of that after-prom event. And we certainly thank all of those that have made donations to support that. And I'm sure the PTSA would still love to have volunteer help for that event. So if anyone can volunteer and help support that event, please be sure and reach out to the PTSA or to the high school who can help connect you with the PTSA. With no other business, we do have reason to go into executive session. The board will not be returning to open session. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person.
Some will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned to executive session. We will not be returning to open session. Have a good evening, everyone.